Education, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Price?
Mrs. Borchers?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Fox?
Here.
Mrs. Packard?
Here.
Mr. Reddick?
Here.
Tonight, we have a special presentation, and then we will do our other presentations. Mr. Piper? Mrs. Borchers, could you please join us?
Oh, boy.
Come on up. So, this is Sue Borchers. Sue's been on our board now for almost eight years. So Sue and I joined the district not long apart. I think I came in August, and was that your first month as well?
July.
July, okay, so a little bit before me.
Yeah.
So Sue has served as well for eight years, and this is her last board meeting. So we wanted to formally thank her for her work with our Board of Education. We've seen a lot of change in the last eight years. We've done a lot of great things, but we just really appreciate your service. And we have this beautiful piece of paper for you tonight, to be followed by a plaque that is a little bit late in getting here. So just want to say thank you for your service on the board.
It has certainly been my pleasure. Thank you to the Troy community for allowing me to serve and to the Troy staff. And they've just been amazing, and it's been a pleasure to represent everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have students from Hook joining us to talk and give us an update on what they're doing at their school. Mrs. Johnson?
I told them there'd be more parents here than people that are presenting.
Watch those little boxes on the floor. That can be...
The large box, it's very cute, sweetheart.
Okay, I'm Penny Johnson. I'm the principal at Hook Elementary. And I have Mrs. Oaks, who is a kindergarten teacher at Hook, and Mrs. Manson. And we are all in the greenhouse. So this year, we redid our houses. We've talked to you guys about our houses, and the kids are going to tell you a little bit about that. So I will let them introduce themselves.
My name's Henry Harvey, and I'm in the fourth grade.
My name's Rickley Perry, and I'm in second grade.
My name's Salem Costa, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name's Kayla Booker, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name's Carla Golden, and I'm in third grade.
My name is Peyton Music, and I'm in kindergarten.
My name's Lincoln Dasha, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Katie Benson, and I'm in seventh grade.
My name's Franklin, and I am kindergarten.
We have seven houses, red, orange, yellow, green, blue, purple, and two. As you can guess, we are all in the greenhouse. Each house has thirty-eight to forty people in it. The students are in grades kindergarten through fifth grade.
Each house also has three to four adult leaders. Our leaders can be a classroom teacher, aide, nurse, janitor, counselor, or specialized teacher. We meet once a month for forty-five minutes.
During our house meetings, we learn about the character trait of the month. We usually have small group discussions about real-life situations and examples. Sometimes, we do an activity to learn about the character trait.
Research shows that houses foster a strong community and boost sense of belonging. They also give older students a chance to mentor younger students. They foster pride in the building and increase a positive relationship between students and staff.
Every elementary school in Troy learns about the same character traits each month. This is one way we make learning about the characters' traits fun and real for us.
I'll attempt the order of kids watching the videos.
My favorite part is the activities we do. At the last house meeting, we shared feelings and brought down on issue what scares us and makes us happy on learning about some of the people in my house.
One of my favorite parts about houses is getting to know the kids in the other groups. If we didn't have houses, I might not ever get to talk to the fifth graders or kindergarten kids.
My favorite thing about the house meetings is about the projects, about the world, and it's about sponsorship.
I really enjoy being around the younger students and being able to teach them when we are in small groups.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
I guess I would like an explanation on what the houses are.
The houses are, so, once a month, we all get together in a group, and we work in little groups on activities, and we learn about the character traits of the month.
So are you guys all that are in the greenhouse, or are there more greens?
More greens.
Okay.
And there's multiple colors?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have red, orange, yellow, green, blue, purple, and two.
So every... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Everyone in the school belongs to a specific color? How does it, how do they, how do they get chosen for that color?
Um, so everyone get, uh, goes, has a group, and it's just like decided by, um, like Ms. Johnson.
Okay.
Do you ever meet with the other houses? Got it?
No.
This year, we might have some house competitions. We'll be talking about that. But you're right. Okay, we have one more. One more.
Oh, oh. Oh, yours is making me cry. Oh, that's so sweet. Cute. Oh, you guys are the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers.
Thank you. You guys are the best.
And Kaylee, you can give her a first time, too.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming tonight, and thank you for recognizing Mrs. Borchers as well. Can you introduce who brought you tonight? If you brought, if you came with your parents, a family member, a friend? You want to go first? Okay.
I came with my, uh, dad.
Your dad? Is he sitting out here?
I came with my dad, mommy, brother.
Oh, wow.
I came with my mom and my dad.
Thank you so much.
I came with my brothers and my dad and my sister.
I came with my mom and sister.
I came with my mom.
I came with my mom.
I came with my mom, dad, and sister.
I come with my mom.
Thank you so much for bringing them and sharing them with us tonight. Mrs. Johnson, this is fantastic. Thank you.
Families, you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we also completely understand if you...
Yeah.
So thank you, guys. Great job. Good job, everybody. Thanks for coming.
That's adorable.
Good job. Thank you.
I don't think that should, no, that should not be here. Because you said that, and I thought you were moving the... I'm like, I'm bringing it here. You're so sweet. You can talk to Christmas, like...
Thank you.
Because we're walking out, and we can talk about this later.
Yes, something.
Next, we'll do board committees. Mrs. Davis, is there anything from Hayner?
Um, well, like I've said in the past, we've switched from meeting every month to every other month. So it goes from twelve meetings a month to six. Very nice. Um, this past weekend was the Christmas Open House. I don't know if any of you were in attendance, but it was beautiful. I was there on Saturday, worked for three hours greeting people as they came in and out. And that was on Saturday when it opened, and it was potentially, it was, it was packed. So I believe they had a great turnout, but I don't have the exact numbers, just because it's Monday. So I don't know how yesterday went. In conjunction with that, uh, next year, 2026, it will be celebrating its fiftieth anniversary. There is a committee formed. I, again, we didn't have a meeting, so I'm just reading this through notes that I got from David Wyon. There is a committee formed for the fiftieth anniversary, and they're going to be doing different events throughout the year to celebrate that.
That's exciting. Thank you. Mr. Dr. Moore, were there any... Okay. Moving right along, folks. May I please have a motion for consideration of the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting Thursday, November thirteenth?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers. Mr. Price?
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion and a second for the financial reports? Exhibit B, November twenty-five, SM2, scheduled revenues, and et cetera, financial reporting.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
Nothing out of the ordinary. You seem to be doing rather well for fiscal year so far. Hopefully, that continues. Medical claims continue to come back in line, so hopefully, that continues. Things are hoping good at this point.
Is there anything that hasn't hit or that has hit funny this year, this month?
Don't believe so.
Okay.
And Jeff, you don't, since our fiscal year is in the summer, and you don't have any big rush to get stuff done at the end of this calendar year, do you?
Uh, just prepping the tax budget for budget commission to review, and we submit that. We start the process actually tonight with the first step resolution. And then I'll bring it back to you for your approval. I'll highlight a couple of things dealing with that in January, and then it gets submitted. That's really, you know, a major thing that I have going on outside of audit. And I sent an email to all of you that has started, so you probably received a questionnaire or two at this point. But that'll continue and keep us busy as along with everything else that's going on.
Okay, thanks. Well, hopefully, not too bad, and you can enjoy your time off in between.
I'm hoping to.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion and a second for then and now? Ohio Revised Code fifty-seven oh five, section forty-one, provides prior certification of funds by the fiscal officer was not obtained before the contract or order of money, um, the fiscal officer may instead certify.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
A couple from Hayner, one from Cookson, Athletics, Haywood, Van Cleve, and the high school, nothing major. I think all but two of them were actually over a month in, so it's just a timing issue for the most part.
Okay, thank you. Can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion and a second for the resolution declaring the necessity of levying a renewal tax in excess of the ten mil limitation and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Price, is this the first step to be on the May ballot for this renewal or March ballot?
Not sure if it's May or March, with it being...
May fifth.
Thank you.
Didn't know if they would be moving it up or not.
Oh, wow.
Sometimes that happens.
You said May fifth. Thank you.
That's on here.
But yes, yes, it is. It's asking for the county auditor certification and, um, the second step resolution. At this point, we intend to bring that back to you at our January meeting for final approval and submission to the Board of Elections to put before the community. And this is also the last of our several renewal levies. So, pending your approval and the community's approval, it actually has to be approved either in May or November of this year, or tax revenue will be lost.
Is this the operating?
This is, yeah, the second of the two operating issues that have five-year term limits.
You said this is the last of the cycle?
Yes.
Until...
Pending approval, then we have a couple of year break before the renewal cycle starts over again.
Okay, thank you.
And was this the one where Sue caught that there was a...
Yes.
You got that?
I've made that change, yes. Actually, I caught it, but the copy that got in the board minutes didn't get pulled and preprinted.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Price, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion and a second for a resolution declaring the intention to proceed under the alternative tax document format, provided under section fifty-seven oh five dot two eight one of the Ohio Revised Code, and to refrain from the preparation of a tax budget for fiscal year twenty-seven?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
This is also an annual resolution dealing with the tax budget that I spoke to a little bit earlier. A few years back, the county auditor changed and went to a, um, tax document format that more closely aligned to our annual reporting, made it easier to complete, basically, for school districts, so...
Well, they did something nice.
Yes.
Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion and a second for the resolution directing the Miami County Auditor to reduce the voted bond levied and collected for tax year twenty-five during collection year twenty-twenty-six for the Troy City School District?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. We have had conversations about this, Jeff. Do you want to...
Yes, um, this item actually started with, um, the county auditor, the county treasurer, and the county prosecuting attorney attending, um, the county treasurer's meeting back in October. He laid out a plan of action verbally to us, kind of talked through various items that they were looking at as a commission oversight, um, with the various taxing authorities throughout the Miami County area. And then we asked questions, they provided more information. And then approximately the second week in November, we received an official proposal from that group at the county level, kind of detailing what they had arrived at as far as a potential plan of action. We're asking for all of the local boards to show their support upon review. And this is where we stand as of today. We met with all of you as we garnered additional information at various times throughout the last few months, um, just to keep you guys in the loop and updated and opportunity to ask questions of us and provide additional information if necessary. So after all that process, um, we had our legal counsel, um, draw this resolution up and bring before you to, uh, show the district support and the fact that everybody's sharpening their pencils with, uh, the increased property values across Ohio. And then being able to still continue to operate as we see fit going through the next tax year. This is a one-year-only approval based upon what they had proposed to us.
Thank you.
Jeff, can you, can you let us know, again, what's the reduction roughly for a hundred K home per year?
With what they've proposed to us, um, they've proposed a reduction of approximately one point two six mils in total over our two bond issues. The oh-four bond issue that added on to the high school, added on to, um, Concord, reopened Forest, and added an elevator to Van Cleve, which we are approaching payoff. That has been refinanced a couple of times throughout its lifetime. And it is actually two separate funding issues at this point. And the first of the two, we're looking to have paid off in twenty-twenty-eight. And the second half of that, um, should be paid off in twenty-thirty-two. And then the new elementary bond issue that was approved, um, late twenty-twenty-three, they are also reducing that a bit. But the overall cost savings for a hundred thousand dollar home is currently being estimated about forty dollars a year between the two, um, various bond issues.
Well, thanks for that.
That'll give, um, probably a little bit of a retrieve, at least for a tax year at this point. And then we'll see where things go beyond that, so...
And this is about one point six million?
One point six million.
Total savings?
Total savings for our community as a whole, so, um, it just doesn't amount to a lot for property tax, but it's, it's something.
Yeah. Well, thanks for going through all this with the budget commission and in terms of our financials to see that, you know, we can absorb it and still be in a good position, so...
Yeah.
I know it was a pretty condensed timeframe that you had to do, so appreciate all that work.
Can you please call the roll, Mr. Price?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion and a second for the superintendent's report accepting gifts to the Troy City School District and expressing the thanks?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Piper?
Always a great part of the agenda. It's, uh, nice to see our community supporting our students, our staff, and our programs. So our December totals are seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixteen cents. Uh, fiscal year-to-date total sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and one dollars and thirty-six cents, and we appreciate every single bit of it.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion and a second to establish the date, time, and place for the January twenty-twenty-six regular annual organizational meeting? It is suggested for that to be on January twelfth at five-thirty.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. The organizational meeting will be, the proposal is Monday, January twelfth at five-thirty, and that will be here at the high school. Mr. Price?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. May I please have a motion and a second for consideration of the appointment of a president pro temp for the January twelfth meeting?
I would like to nominate Mrs. Packard.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick. Are there any discussion? Mr. Price?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Packard?
Yes. Thank you. May I please have a motion and a second for approval of the Troy High School twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven Plans for Learning?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Seems kind of crazy. Here we are, twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Like, I wasn't sure if it was you or Mrs. Dietrich that was gonna...
That's about all I have to say. So Michael's worked closely with Alexis. Um, they'll be happy to tell you. Want to hear any highlights?
Are you guys kind of like rock, paper, scissors at it or something?
It does feel a little earlier than normal, but I, I kind of got, uh, I wanted to move this up because we really do start meeting with students as soon as we get back from Christmas break about scheduling and things. And we just felt that it was important to have as much updated and ready to go, rather than scheduling for classes and then putting this out. And, um, and sometimes there's going to be updates that, you know, need to be made along the way if, uh, things change. But this is, we feel like we're in a really good spot. So, um, there's still, I feel like every year, there's still a few changes that we see. Like, how did we not catch that from the last time when we updated this? But so there's a few of those kinds of changes. It was like, those should have just probably been caught sooner, but we're making them now. One thing that we're doing is, one thing that will add to this, but it is border proof anyhow, are the school fees. So the fees associated with the courses have never been put into that Plans for Learning. So when, um, so when families see that, see the courses, they at least have an idea of like what it would cost for them to pay the fees for those, for those classes, rather than, again, kind of seeing that long after they've, um, uh, registered for classes. So we, we do want to add those in, um, into the Plans for Learning from here on out. And then, um, a couple of changes, highlights to, to mention is, um, we are adding a calculus three class, starting next school year. That will be an Edison C C P class. That calc three class, uh, we found is going to be needed. We have a couple of students who have to take that off campus this year. With the, um, with the work we're doing in offering, uh, the acceleration of the math at an, at an earlier age in junior high, um, students are accessing math classes sooner, and they're running out of classes that they can take here. And we have staff who are capable and, and eligible to teach this and willing to do so. And so I think, you know, we'd be crazy not to offer this class here for our students so we don't get, take them off campus for it. So we believe that this will continue to, to grow as we have more students taking math earlier, um, in their, in their academics. So that is one, um, kind of one of the big highlights there.
So on, on that, if a student's going to be in calc three, maybe, what's their math progression from seventh grade? I remember calc, calculus was the highest twenty years ago, so, um, I didn't even see calc two or three, so... What, when, when do they start taking some of these classes to all the family get this?
So a natural progression in this, and if you ever, it is a little bit complicated, but if you do want to see kind of the big picture, um, in that full Plans for Learning, uh, document, right at the very beginning of the math section, we've got this big web of things that kind of show you where, where things go. But students start in Algebra one, and they progress to geometry. So now that we're offering Algebra one in seventh grade, geometry in eighth grade, that means Algebra two as a freshman, pre-calc as a, as a sophomore. So then their junior year, they can take AP Stats, calc AP BC, which is like a, which is the AP class. Also could be C C P, um, if they didn't want to do AP. So we have... It also could be CCP, um, and if they didn't want to do AP, so we have, like, starts to spread, and they can kind of select where they want to go. Some of them don't always want to take that last math, but we have enough students who we believe are going to want to continue taking math. So that Calc III would be those students who already took the Calc AB and Calc BC as juniors.
They'd take two Calculus classes? Is they, they sem- are they semester?
Semester.
Okay.
And so then this Calc III, so Calc III isn't even offered as AP. It's not an AP option. Actually, it's just college class, so. Offering it through that is for us.
Wow. Great.
Yeah. Excited to offer that.
Page, page four is the graphic that?
There you go, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Um, so then I just made a quick addition of the ACT being offered. We started offering ACT in the fall this year. As you remember, the ACT was added as a state test for all juniors to be able to take the ACT for free at least once here during the school day, instead of having to schedule it on their own and pay for it on their own outside of school. So the state added that state test. But the national ACT, I believe, has felt that they don't see as many students taking it either because, again, only being offered on the weekends, a lot of our students are busy and in sports or have jobs and things like that. So they've reached out and offered schools to, uh, offer the ACT for students during the school day. They do still have to pay for that one because it is the national test, but, um, it's at a reduced price for them. So by taking it here instead of on a weekend, um, they have an opportunity to take it at a reduced price and not have to give up a weekend or try to schedule it somewhere else. So we did offer that, so we add that in because we plan to do that, uh, moving forward, so. Um, and again, just if you haven't seen, some of the things are out there, but some of the colleges are now going back to requiring. If you remember during COVID and shortly after, they took that out as a, um, application process and requirement. But now colleges and universities are adding that back in. So we want to make sure that students have opportunities to take that test. Um, as you saw there, Latin is, um, our, we mentioned in the previous board meeting that, uh, Mrs. Limkey is retiring. And so at this point, we do not, uh, plan to continue on with, with Latin. We're trying to replace that, um, that language at this time, so, uh, that's why that's being removed from the Plans for Learning.
Have we thought about adding a different language in the future?
We have. We've definitely thought of it. I know we need, we've, we've had a few discussions. I think we need some time to kind of figure out what our community would want and need in terms of like what the students would be willing to and want to, uh, take. And then also what is needed by our workforce and things. And so, um, if we were to feel that that would be needed, we kind of want to see what happens. We did not want to just jump into something right away because we just did not feel like right now anything was sticking out. I think, um, from when I talked to, uh, fellow colleagues at, uh, you know, our local districts, county schools, MBL schools and things, and, I don't think that anybody has the answer to like what else do we need? And right now, you know, we have a, we have a really, uh, great turnout of course requests for our ASL in Spanish. And with our, the schedule, the way we have some plans for that, we'll be able to absorb the students who are taking Latin and be able to absorb them into, um, some of the other sections. So we'll be, we'll be okay for a while unless we feel like and see, we'll work with the Foreign Language Department too to try to figure out if there's anything we do need, but.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, trying to think if there's anything else. Like I said, a few of those were just updates to the descriptions because we should have probably done that when we added some of those CCP classes a few years back, but it wasn't. So, um, you'll see on my rationale there, a few of them just needed to be updated. The same with choir. So, uh, Mrs. Sagoda approached me about updating the wording for the choir courses. They're not changing in any way, but they have evolved from years back when this was, um, written. And, uh, so she just wanted it to be more reflective of what they do currently do. So that, again, when families are reading it, they'll be, they'll know what to expect in terms of what level they should, um, should be choosing. So I think that mostly covers it, but if you guys have any other specific questions, um...
Mr. Price, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Packer?
Yes. May I please have a motion and a second for Exhibit G, which is the personnel for December?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Dillon?
Uh, pretty standard agenda, really. Only one thing I want to highlight. It looks like Rachel said you might be leaving us. Um, don't be alarmed. She's, uh, she's just changing seats. So we're pretty fortunate to have her, um, with her background in special education, um, prior to coming to Troy. It was a natural fit for her to move into that role of, of case manager. So, um, happy to see her move into that, and, uh, we're actually, uh, working on finding her replacement.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mrs. Packer?
Yes. Seeing no second hearing of the public unless there's people hiding in stacks.
I've, I'd like to bring something up just real quick. The Pop Rock schedule was released, and they're going to Duke, their, the travels are Duke and Penn State, I believe. And they just added the Cleveland Cavaliers on Sunday. So that'll be interesting because they have to cut a minute off the routine of Cavaliers, you know? So, um, that was a last-minute add just recently, so that'll be fun.
Is Duke the one, or is it Penn State, the one that they always do, and it's just such a?
Well, there's no like real always.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Duke's, they did Duke, last time they did Duke, I think it was two years ago, maybe three years ago. Penn State, bless you.
Sorry.
Penn State, they did, they've done like the last couple of years. And I don't know when they did that, you know, did it before those two years, but it's kind of a cycle. It's whatever colleges ask for them to come.
Okay.
Yeah.
Please look at, I believe that'll be a fun one.
Yeah, it'll be interesting, so.
Do they publicly set schedules somewhere?
Uh, you can find it, I think they do have it on their website, Facebook page will have it all and everything. Yeah. Their first real performance is this Friday at Centerville. So in this year, the, the Troy one is when they played Tip City, I believe. I believe it's that game.
Pretty exciting.
Enjoy seeing it.
They put a lot of work into that.
Yeah, that's a, it's a sport.
The parents, too.
Yeah.
May I please have a motion and a second for adjournment? Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchers. Mr. Price?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Borchers?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mrs. Packer?
Yes.
That's a wrap, Sue.